Hi, I'd like to bring this regular board meeting of December 11th to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Price, may we just call the roll?
Mrs. Borchers?
Here.
Mr. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Hamm?
Here.
Mrs. Packard?
Here.
Mr. Trussell?
Here.
I would like to start the presentations by honoring our two board members here who for which this is their last meeting. Mr. Trussell, thank you very much for your service. I always forget it's twenty some odd years. Twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four years. So he's an institution and believe me, we will miss his institutional knowledge. It's been tremendous working with you and I really have learned so much and I know I still have your number, so I will be reaching out because you have so much knowledge. And Mr. Hamm, Mr. Hamm, sixteen?
Eight.
Eight. Oh, I thought it was longer than that. Eight more minutes. Eight years, eight wonderful years. It's been very much a pleasure working with you. Another person that I have learned so much about, he is a, he knows everything about Troy and everybody in Troy. So it's been a pleasure working with you. I know we are honored to have you as part of this board for eight years. So thank you.
It was my pleasure. Thank you.
Mr. Price, Mr. Piper?
Mr. Trussell, thank you. And Michael, I know you probably have not been here as often as what you had hoped, but thank you too for your service. I'd just like to add, we appreciate your service so much to the staff and students of our district and to the community as a whole. We have a couple of plaques that we, at least we do is get you a plaque after all this time. This one says, presented to Board Member Doug Trussell in recognition for his years of service as a board member for the Troy City Schools Board of Education, January of 1999 to December of 2023. And to Michael Hamm, the same, from January of 2015 to December of 2023. Thank you very much, Michael. And I'm sure your adoring fans would love to hear from both of you.
I'll let the veteran know first.
It's been a good run. I've just enjoyed having the opportunity to represent the community and serve on the Board of Education. We've covered a lot of ground over the 24 years, so a lot of inroads. And I think we're charting on a very good path for the Troy City School District. And I think every student and every parent in the district can be very proud of what Troy Schools brings to the table and the success that your students have before them. So thanks for allowing me to serve.
Michael, I think you have some fans in the room, too.
Do I?
Special guest walked in late. Did you know that? I didn't hear that.
I didn't know that. Oh, my gosh. But you know, it is because of some of those fans that gave me a great start. Troy Schools gave me the best start I could have ever asked for. And I've always believed that when you get something that's good, you can't keep it for yourself. You have to give it back. And hopefully in some small measure, I've been able to do it because Troy Schools is a great place to work and be a student and be a product of. And long may that continue.
We thank you both very much and maybe one more hand of applause for both. Always kind of squeeze the last bit out of them, right?
Yeah. We'll miss your smiling faces at the meetings for sure. So next, an update from the board committees. Mr. Hamm, did you have anything for the here?
If you have not yet gotten the chance to see the decorations and hang there, please do so. They are beautiful once again this year. The Cotner Annex is all set up and number dedication and it looks beautiful from the pictures I've seen. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Fox?
So at the Career Center, you probably sound like a broken record here. Mr. Andy Bueller, he won another award at Nationals for the AutoTech program. He placed third place in the U.S. AutoTech Nationals and for that he won $10,000. It's not his first award and it probably will not be his last. So great job for him. Troy had 13 students on the Honor Society up at the Career Center. And just another update for the new project that I mentioned last time, that we're getting a good funding from the state, 12 and a half, 12.7 million from the state, 5.4 million locally funded. That's going to be a 25,000 square foot addition and it's going to also renovate 15,000 square feet and it'll accommodate up to 170 more students up there in the Career Center. So while we're turning away students because of reaching capacity, expanding that capacity, that estimated completion, September 2026. So for that, the start of that school year of the 2026 school year there.
Thank you.
Yep, sorry. And one final reminder, we do need to nominate one more person in January to a three-year term on that board. That would start in January of 2024. So anyone wants to talk more about it, happy to talk more afterwards. Can be a board member or a member from the community.
We also have, Michael was representative of the Troy Hayner, so we will also need a representative to take his place on the board for Troy Hayner. Is that three years also or?
Two.
Two? Two?
Two, yeah.
Two. Okay, thank you. All right, next, we have team math from the Troy High School.
So I'll introduce Mrs. Alexis DeJer first. And then you can introduce who you'd like to go there.
So I'm just, I'm going to make one introduction, which is Mrs. Lempel. So Mrs. Lempel is our department head for the math department at Troy High School. And so she is our leader for team math. We have a wonderful representation here of our team math teachers. And then we brought with us five students today who are going to talk to you a little bit about their experience being part of team math. So Mrs. Lempel.
All right, well, I'll get started. Can we introduce the other math teachers?
Do you want me to let them all to come? Do you want them to kind of extend?
All right, yeah. My team math teacher. Well, I'm Jackie Lempel.
I'm Megan Arnold.
Michelle Owen.
Hannah Schultz.
And Scott Knappi.
So these are teachers that came to help support the support kids right here. So where do I just put? Oh, look at him. He's so good. So Troy High School is lucky to have these math support classes. All right, so math supportees, please stand. They're really excited to be here. If you don't know much about math support, it is new. We are in our third year here. We have somebody here who's been since the very beginning of math support. But there's three key attributes of math support. It's we teach them Trojan Way skills. We give them, it's a math credit. We hold them accountable in their core classes and we target test prep. Look, I feel like I got power here. So let's talk about the wow. We have a lot of Algebra I teachers here and if you didn't know, we have the number one Algebra I scores in Miami County. We are also the number one among 20 similar school districts. We are fourth among 10, the region 10 schools, which is, is that all of the neighboring counties? There's about 50 in there. And then I had to dig deeper because you know, numbers and stats are pretty cool things. We're in the top 10% in the state of Ohio. A team approach, we got the teachers in Algebra I, we got the math support teachers. But most importantly, it's because we believe in these students. And so I believe the next slide is the students are going to talk a little bit about themselves.
If you guys want to sit and then each one of you stand when you go up to introduce yourselves and then you can get started.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Honeyman. I'm a senior. Those are my friends right there. I was the first person like being in support class my sophomore year because of COVID. I really struggled during that. With support, like I learned how to like get my math homework turned on time and got better test scores and passed like my EOCs because of it. And yeah, and because of it, I'm going to Eastern Kentucky in the fall of next year.
Okay, my name is Jalen. I brought my mom with me and I'm a senior. So I moved in from Nevada as a junior that I learned the Trojan Way and Desmos. I needed to pass the Algebra EOC, Algebra I EOC, and then I ended up earning over 700 on the EOC. And then the curriculum in Vegas is a lot different than it is here. It's a lot more difficult here. So it took me some time to get through the system and how it was so different over here. And then my teachers saw something amazing in me and they got it out.
I'm Elizabeth Thacker. I go by Ella. I'm a senior. In junior year, I moved from Florida to Ohio and I needed to earn more credits. So this gave me a credit. So I also needed to pass the Algebra I EOC and I got a five on that and it got me on the Wall of Fame. It's awesome.
This student could not come. I don't know.
Yeah, I can, Hannah, this is. I can talk about Jericho. So I had Jericho in support last year. He joined support as a freshman. That was in our like second iteration of math support, where we really wanted to target incoming freshmen who we thought might struggle with that transition over to the high school. And we wanted to make sure they were ready for the EOC. And he didn't have the highest projection on passing the EOC and he not only passed it, but he got above a 700 and he showed so much growth throughout the school year. Not only just in math, but across the board, like learning the Trojan Way and staying on top of all of his classes. And I think it really helped him to have a successful freshman year.
My name is Jesus. I moved here this year from California and the math over there was a lot more difficult. So I'm very grateful to have the support from Islamco. And yeah, I, last quarter I had terrible grades and then I got the support from Islamco and my main math teacher Miss Siz shows. And yeah, I'm doing better now. I also love the snacks.
What kind of snacks we talking about here?
Well, I brought snacks. It's a shout out to the Troy Foundation because we get a grant every year and they give us $1,000 to get them snacks, Trojan attire, school supplies, whatever they need. So yeah, sometimes snacks works. So I have a bag of oatmeal cream pies if anybody needs one.
All right. Hello, I am Macy White and I am a freshman at the Troy High School. Since kindergarten, I've really struggled with math. Math is not my favorite or was not my favorite at first. But then as I realized I needed help because my math was not going, math was not going good for me. So I asked for help for, like I asked my teacher, Ms. Owen, and I asked for some help and if I can get like some more support because like I said, math is not my specialty. And I have help now from, from Coleswell. And then also, by the way, if you haven't heard of it, Desmos, uh huh, that saves lives. That saves, that saves me a lot because I struggle and just now math is my favorite. I've actually been able to stay on top of my assignments. I've been really good at getting them turned in and doing all that. So that is, yeah.
And here's just some more numbers. Like you can never have too many numbers in your life. Out of the freshmen, we have 357 freshmen at Troy High School. We got 17% of them in a math support course. And we do think it was a game changer in our EOC scores and our growth measure. So. And then I don't know what the next, I should know what the next slide is. And this is data just on the support. If you could take a look at it, like the IEPs, 2022, we had 65% passing, but in 2023, we got 84% to pass. And non-IEPs were up to 91%. So that's impressive.
Do you want to explain the 684, 700?
So the 684 is the state score for graduation. 700 is a three on the EOC. That's what's reported on the state report card.
That's a proficiency kind of bar.
And then of course, you know, we just like to put our 20 similar districts and where we ended up at, so.
So these are 20 most similar districts from across the state of Ohio, districts that are most like Troy. Some pretty big differences there.
Yeah.
Now, how do, how do they get into this? Do you recognize them or do they come to you?
It's a little bit of all kinds of things. We are on our three, third reiteration of how they get into our class. Currently, like we said, we want to play offense and get the eighth graders recommended into the freshmen that need support. And the eighth grade teachers have been spot on as far as who they think needs extra support. And then we have Macy here who's advocated for herself and with Mrs. Owen said, hey, we think she needs extra support. And we got her in, I don't know how soon in the start of the school year.
Probably like, I would say three weeks maybe?
Three weeks? Yeah. So this is just a little bit of everybody. The whole high school has, is geared on this Algebra I. The counselors work. If they need math support, math becomes, is before like electives and everything. We just want them to have their success early.
So what's up on the screen here is the percentage of students who passed Algebra I here in Troy.
Yeah, the 700 score.
So proficiency, that's the, that's the higher benchmark.
Yes, yes.
And then you have the percentage of all the other districts in that 20% group or the top 20 group. Now, you know, a lot of those we don't recognize, but we do recognize Northmont. So the gap between Troy and Northmont is about 18, 18 and a half percent. And then you see another one recognized as Vandaya Butler, 57% passing compared to 85% almost here. Miami'sburg, 54%. So some big gaps between districts that are very similar to us and the results that you folks are getting. So that's incredibly impressive.
And I know you had Miami'sburg come and visit. Have you had other schools?
We've had Miami'sburg has come in, Northmont has come in and just a couple of weeks ago, we had Lima City. They went to see us.
How did you develop? How did you develop the idea of we need to do this?
God bless COVID.
The first one you guys got out of COVID.
That's a sentence I've never heard before.
I mean, it was because of that that we just initiated the changes. We had students from COVID and then we just kept building on it.
So one of the things about that course is, she mentioned it, is that they get a math course credit. So it is, it was initially used like that for the COVID students who struggled at home learning and the hybrid learning. So if they struggled to earn that credit that year, we were able to put them in this simultaneous math course to earn two credits, two math credits in one year. So it was a credit recovery option without them having to do, you know, on their own online option for credit recovery. So that's kind of how it started. And then we saw like what a great thing. And we knew that even the year coming out and after them, they still were going to need help. And we still were seeing the gaps. But slowly those are being closed at our lower levels anyhow. So now, like she said, it's the offensive game now. And so we use some of that data, trend data, to track students on their way into high school to see who traditionally would need that help. So.
I mean, they basically get two math teachers in their corner because we collaborate so well between the Algebra I teachers and myself and the other support teachers.
That's great.
So I heard, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I don't know of many school districts where you would have students standing up bragging about their success in math. That is typically the first category where they say they're struggling with it. And it's refreshing to hear that you have found help and the school's has taken a proactive stance in helping those students.
You know, as someone who was not the best with numbers and is not the best with numbers, I would have needed a triage. So a group. But it is so great to hear students who didn't have the confidence now to say they have it. That's the best thing in the world.
We call that math esteem.
The other thing that stands out is that we've got several that recently moved into the district and knowing where they were coming into the district and then how far they've progressed once they've joined the district.
And one thing to note there with this Algebra I being a graduation requirement, Algebra I and also ELA II, so English 10, those two tests, every single student, it doesn't matter when you move into our district, you could move in in February of your senior year and you have to pass those two tests to graduate with an Ohio diploma. So that is why it's so critical to have some of this support, especially for our students who, you know, they, they didn't know what they were coming into. And even though algebra is a foundational math course across the country, it's very, I mean, these teachers know that that is, it is the work that they do to research what the state is asking them to do and perform and, and the trends that we see in the standards that are, are tested. And so that sets the students up for success. They're not spending time on others. There's tons of algebra standards out there that you could teach. Ohio focuses on certain ones. So we have to make sure these students have those in their focus. So Algebra I is, you know, sounds like it's Algebra I. How hard can it be? But certainly Ohio has narrowed their focus on specific standards for it. And so then we want to set those students up for success there.
But it sounds like rather than teaching to the test, you're taking a broader approach to it. And now you've got a love for math. That's, that's the real success here.
Well, and she's not going to take credit, but I'm going to chime in and say that this, she said that this, we this and we that. I was, I was in Alexis's seat when Jackie came to me and these courses were in the EMUS manual, which is, it's a manual put out by ODE and most districts had no idea that this was even an option. And Jackie came to me and said, hey, can we do this? And I knew when she came to me with something, if I said no, I better have a really good reason why. We sat down and talked about it, but this was her brainchild. She's the one that initiated it and it's really grown. So I appreciate how she's given the team a lot of credit because they deserve it for all the work that they've done. But we wouldn't be where we are, we wouldn't have started without her coming forward with that idea. So it made me look really good in some meetings when I shared with other principals that at the time that this was what we were doing, what we were going to do. So kudos to Jackie.
One, one thing I may have missed is, is this a full year program or a semester program? Or if you get caught up, do you kind of graduate out of it or?
So what's interesting is there's three different support courses. So there's an Algebra I support course, there's a geometry support course and an Algebra II. We're so talented, we put all three in the same classroom. I know, right? But we just have theme days like Mondays, mental math dates, Tuesdays and Thursdays are test preps. And we just make it work. The first couple of years, it was a little hectic in there. But since they're passing, everyone's passing, not everyone, 85% passing that Algebra I EOC. It seems that's to be the focus. But we still have a couple of juniors, seniors in there that are, still need the Algebra I EOC. So even though they're in an Algebra II class, they come to us for the test prep, if that makes sense.
And so they'll retake that, a lot of the upperclassmen then will, will retake. Or if they're moving and taking it for the first time, we'll test them in December here. We are, we just got done with that last week with the retakes. So students who were not successful on their first attempts, they would get an opportunity to retake that several times throughout the year. But December is one of our retakes. And so some of the students who, if that was, if they didn't need the full year credit for recovery credit and they were really just getting that support for that test, then if they pass that test, then that second semester opens up for them to take an elective or something else. Then they wouldn't have to finish out that credit if that was all they needed. Yep. And then some are just like, they just want the support all year long because it's helpful to them in their core class. So there are some who it's beneficial, even if they pass that, they would still want to stay in it to help support their core class as well. So just kind of look at it at an individual basis and what does the kid need? And we go from there. So.
Kelsey here was in it for two years and she wanted to be in the third year, but you know, we only have so much room. So instead, she's my student A.
Getting you to work. That's awesome.
Well, I can't thank you all enough, the students and the teachers. This is amazing for Troy. I'm continually amazed at how the teachers go the extra mile to help in students, especially on an individual basis. I am just stunned at the, we, how much effort is put. I mean, we want all of our students to succeed. And obviously we have at least one that got into college. I don't know about the other seniors or what your paths are, but how amazing. So thank you very much. It's great to have that spirit and that, and that caring for our students and really wanting to help them succeed. I can't thank you enough.
I think it's great.
Anything else?
I was just going to, can you also just speak a little bit about the presentations, things that you guys have done outside of our school? I know that other schools have come here, but how did they hear about us? Obviously our scores speak for themselves, but I'd love, I'd like you to share a little bit about that too.
So we do present at OCTM and we've been presenting the support course for the last two years. And so we have some followers that come to check what's 2.0 look like and 3.0 will be coming this next year. But there's a lot of interest in it because a lot of schools do not know about these courses and they have a lot of information. Heck, there's teachers that attend these sessions. That would be Scott. He attended last year at OCTM and he's working for us this year.
Oh, recruiting tool.
It really is. At the OCTM level, the Troy City Schools has quite the reputation between the Desmos that they do and the math support and all of that.
Can you tell them about OCTM?
Oh, sorry. Ohio Council Teacher of Mathematics.
So it's a state?
It's the state conference that we go to every year.
That is awesome.
Have they ever thought about making this as a presentation at the OSBA conference? Because I know they have a lot of breakout sessions there as well.
Be amazing. I don't know if they know what we charge though.
Dave, I can't remember where you, you may have been at the junior high at the time. Billy Emmerich had started the passage several years ago and I think we did a breakout session over at the OSBA conference on that one.
It's, it's an HR director's dream to have a team that goes out and does recruiting for you. The more we can spread that info, the better we will be.
Well, congratulations. I think it's awesome. It's just reconfirms its confirmation for the success that Troy offers and instills in their students throughout the district. So congratulations.
Thank you all for coming and taking time out of your very busy lives and your free time. We really appreciate you being here. We always love having presenters and thank you for the parents for your support for all of your students. We really appreciate that as well.
Thank you for looking out for our students. Really appreciate that. And thank you students for coming. It's not easy to come to this, I know. But thank you for standing up and talking about yourself and being willing to share.
Absolutely. And you guys are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. It's very riveting. But you don't, you don't have to. So if you want to, you want to slip out, don't forget Mrs. Lempel has oatmeal cream pies, I think I already said. You guys did a great job. We appreciate that much. Thank you. Thanks for coming in, guys.
I remember looking at Leadership Troy and, Mr. Dillon? I remember coming through at Leadership Troy and going to a math class and there were two teachers in that class.
So that was probably a photo op class.
Is that what that was? Okay, thank you.
So one of the intervention specialists and.
So one of the intervention specialists and.
I just remember being thinking like, that would have changed my math career in school. That would have changed my math career in school.
And that's another level of support.
That would have been a completely different. It's impressive that she raised her hand and said, I want to add things.
Awesome. All right. Okay. Next, we have the first hearing of the public for any item that's on the agenda. Nothing? Okay, thank you. Next, we have the treasurer's report, the approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting on Thursday, November 16th, and the special meeting on Tuesday, November 28th. Thank you, Mrs. Parker. Thank you, Mr. Fox. Any questions? Mr. Parker, please call the roll.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mrs. Porcher's?
Yes. Next, we have the finance report, the items in Exhibit C, including the November 2023 SM2, schedule of revenues, expenditures, exchanges, balance, fund balances, five-year forecast, and appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Trussell and Mr. Ham. Mr. Price?
I have nothing further to add. If you have any questions, I'll.
Anybody have questions?
Try and answer them.
No questions? All right, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Porcher's?
Yes. Next, we have the then and now provides, the Ohio Revised Code provides that a prior certification of funds by the fiscal officer was not obtained before the contract or order involving the expenditure, then the fiscal officer may certify instead.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Trussell?
Second.
Mr. Fox?
One by Hayner, one a high school, and the third one there is for maintenance. And that was dealing with emergency situation at the high school and just happened to hit on the last day of the month and time we got to paperwork for it in the next month.
All right. Any questions? Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mrs. Porcher's?
Yes. Excuse me. Next, we have the resolution declaring the intention to proceed under the alternative tax document format provided under Section 570 5.281, and to refrain from the preparation of tax budget for the fiscal year 2024, and authorizing our treasurer to prepare and submit to Miami County Budget Commission.
So moved.
Mrs. Packard. Thank you, Mr. Ham.
This is a manual reservation with our annual tax budget approval. It's a two-step process. This is to utilize the revamped tax budget document provided to us by the Miami County Auditor, and then it'll be brought before you at our January 8 regular meeting.
Any questions from Mr. Price? Will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mrs. Porcher's?
Yes. Moving to the superintendent's report, the resolution accepting gifts to the Troy School District and expressing the thanks of the Board of Education.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ham.
Second.
Mr. Fox. Mr. Packard?
So you'll notice a couple of monetary awards on the list there. But I also want to point out that especially this time of year, we see quite a bit of giving spirit. I know one of our board members brought in some codes tonight for a code drive that our, one of our support groups is doing for kids. And we see, we had a collection box here in the office, and it's just that time of year where our kids, our staff, everyone around is collecting for the needy and helping support through the holidays. So we just really appreciate that. Our December total was $121, and our fiscal year-to-date total so far is $125,340.12. Great. Appreciate our community for their support.
Yes. Will you please call the roll, Mr. Price?
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yep.
Mrs. Porcher's?
Yes. Next, we have the approval of policies. Administration is requesting that the new revised policies as listed below will be approved and become effective December 11, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Packard. Thank you, Mr. Trussell.
I did a first reading of those policies last month and had some discussion on, be happy to answer any questions if there are any. If not, I was asked for you to approve as presented.
Mr. Parker?
Yeah.
Today was not able to attend the meeting last month. Talk to me a little bit about the vaccination one. We do that with parental consent.
We do. And I'm not looking at the current version. Is the?
It's in the next one.
To the next section. So we pulled that out for next session.
I'll hold that question.
Yes, thank you. So will you, any questions?
None.
Will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Porcher's?
Yes. Next, the second set of policies.
There we go.
It's requesting the new and revised policies as listed, which is the inter-district open enrollment immunization.
So this is the late change in agenda. If you're looking at the one that was shared last Friday. Oh, sorry.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Packard. Mr. Trussell? Now, Mr. Parker.
Yes, now. So that was a late addition. If you're looking at the one that was shared last Friday, it's been revised today. So that's, we pulled these two out. So there are, this policy mostly deals with the ability that student, the people, the parents have to, if they can't afford to get immunized, to have that provided by the county. That's the purpose of this policy.
Right.
There is a different policy that handles the use of medications as well. But the main point of this policy is about identifying, notifying people they have the right to be immunized by the county if they choose.
And even, I'm sure even with the immunization, we would notify the parents, correct?
Yes.
I just want to say thanks for breaking these policies out. I won't get into it. I've said my opinions on these the last, the last time, and I've spent a lot of time thinking about these since our last meeting and still have a bit of reservations on them. It's not much different than what I said the last time. I did review Policy 5330, Use of Medications, and I still had an issue with the definition of medication. I wasn't, didn't have a good feeling in my stomach that if that included immunizations or not. So that's where I have the, the holdup on, on this 5320 without changing it to say with parental consent in there. And then on the inter-district open enrollment, again, I thought a lot about it. And every time I read it, I just could not get over in my head how this seems like a racist policy to be able to allow the administration to choose to approve or not approve a student from moving from one building to another building within the district. And I, I could not, I couldn't approve that, that policy either. So I'm still stuck on that, even though I read the Ohio Revised Code 3313-97, and I understand it does say procedures to ensure appropriate racial balance is maintained in the district schools. So I understand it's based on that. However, just, I can't, can't approve it. It just, the racial context of it still does not sit well with me. So that's why I asked for these to be broken out. So thank you.
And to reiterate, we just also discussed at the last meeting that this particular policy, if we did not include it in our policies, then we could be, just lost my train of thought.
Subject to.
Subject to.
Lots of federal funding.
Thank you. Phew, that just went right out of my head. I apologize. So just, that's why we.
Well, I think it's worth reiterating that these, all these policies and the policy updates are a result of a professional organization that we contract with to keep all of our policies current and up to date.
Based on the Ohio Revised Code.
Correct.
Right. Are there any other questions? If not, will you please call the roll, Mr. Price?
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
No.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mrs. Porcher's?
Yes. Okay, moving to Item D, to approve the marching band trip to Orlando, Florida.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Packard.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
On the road again, huh?
Yeah, that was quite the trip. I'm jealous. Oh, there she is. Molly, want to tell us about it?
Yeah, so this is a trip that we are proposing to take next November. It is an optional trip for our high school band students. So it's open to any band students, high school band students and their families. We will be leaving the Saturday before Thanksgiving, go down to Orlando, spend a little bit of time at Universal, a little bit of time at Disney World, do a parade performance at Universal, and then be back Wednesday evening in time for everyone to still be with their friends and family for Thanksgiving.
That's a whirlwind trip.
Keep them busy.
You've taken this trip before.
We've taken a similar trip that we've gone to Disney, but we're using the same travel company. Last time that we went, we just did Disney, but we're really excited about going to Universal. I think our teenagers are really going to enjoy that.
And remind me, are you on a rotation, like a certain number of years you guys go back there, or is it?
Yeah, we are on a rotation. So we do take the London trip every four years. We just did that last year. And then we take a year off from travel, and then the next year, we'll go on a smaller trip. So this is considered our smaller trip. So that every student, if they participate in marching band for four years, has two opportunities to travel with us.
Wow.
Yeah.
And as a reminder, those are, next year's school calendar, those are non-school days for kids.
Yeah.
Right? So we have our professional development days on those, on those days leading up. So typically, we're in session Monday and Tuesday, but next year, those are professional development work days. So all students are off, so they're not missing any school for this trip.
Right. How exciting.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you for this advance notice. This might be the record for farthest out advance notice. I know other, other programs can't always plan that far in advance. So that's.
Well, and, you know, we want to make sure, we are going to fly there and back to make best use of our time. So we want to make sure that we're going to get it in as fiscally responsible for our families as possible. So we want to go, go early on that.
Important question, is the parade going to be televised, this parade?
Probably not. I don't think, because I'm guessing it's kind of a daily type of parade that they do through the park, but I'm sure we'll get some great family footage that we can share back home.
And I think there's probably a guy that we travel with her that's pretty good at taking pictures.
It could be. He does like to take some pictures and video every once in a while.
Yes, we'd love to see them. And thank you very much for your effort on this. I know students appreciate it, and we're glad that we're represented out of state.
Yeah, they're very excited about the opportunity.
That's awesome.
I know you haven't voted yet, but to give Molly a plug, she's a, no rookie in the travel, and she does a great job with it. I mean, it's no small task getting high school kids on airplanes, especially flying overseas. So if you can handle that, I think you can handle this.
Piece of cake, I hope.
Wow.
Well, and the other challenge with this is the fundraising, because I'm sure you support a lot of different initiatives, giving the students opportunities to raise money to.
Yeah, and that's another reason we're starting early. That way also we can break it into payments that are a little bit more manageable. We don't plan on collecting any money until January, but we gave our, our families notice last month, pending board approval. This is coming your way. So if you want to start helping, you know, kind of work on some family budget things, you know, we're trying to.
Grandpa making monetary donations.
Yeah, or if you want to turn it into some holiday gifts.
I see a lot of Christmas presents coming.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mrs. Porcher's?
Yes. And next, we have the approval of more out-of-state trips for our Pop Rocks to West Virginia, Penn State, and University of Cincinnati.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Ham.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Trussell. Pop Rocks.
The only thing that bothers me is I never get any clues on what their show is going to be like. So I think I should sneak peek.
Well, there is one, right?
There is.
There is.
They usually do.
Yeah, I know. I mean, not.
Not personal.
He wants to go see what it looks like at Penn State.
I will say that Josh did invite me to practice, so I can't.
You wanted to be onsite. I get it now. Okay. All right. Any questions? If not, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Porcher's?
Yes. Next, we need to establish the date, time, and place for our January 2024 regular organizational meeting, which is currently on January 8th at 5:30 right here in the board office.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Packard and Mr. Fox. I guess it works. If not, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Well, I may not be available. Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Same goes for me, yes.
Remember, the public's welcome.
Mrs. Porcher's.
Yeah, that's right. You're always welcome to join us.
Did you know, yes?
Yes. Sorry. It's just, yes. All right. Thank you, Teresa. Next, we have the consideration of the appointment of a president pro tempore. Sorry. The board must name a person as president pro tempore to preside initially at the regularly scheduled meeting on January 8th, and then the person selected must be continuing on the board.
So moved.
Second.
For whom?
For whom? Oh, I don't know. It's, yeah, Porcher's, please. Mrs. Porcher's.
All right. Any comments, questions, changes? Will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mrs. Porcher's?
Yes. I'd be honored. Next, we have the Exhibit G, the personnel, December personnel items.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ham and Mr. Fox. Mr. Dillon?
A couple of things to point out this month. So if you look at resignations, retirements, and discharge, we, we have a few retirements. So Michelle Brand, English teacher at High School, will be retiring at the end of the year. Patty Kazmeyer, a second grade teacher over at Haywood, also end of the year. And then Janet Rhodes, who's the library assistant at Van Cleve. So we wish them all well in their retirement. A few other things to note in that section, Julie Campbell, currently our assistant treasurer. Julie is going to be moving over to be the administrative assistant for facilities and maintenance. So if you have a chance to meet Rich, that's a good move for Julie. So Jeff and I are currently pursuing candidates to backfill her role. Big shoes to fill there. And then something that I always enjoy seeing, Joe Knoll. Joe has been a second shift custodian for us. He is actually going to resign that position. And if you read there, it's contingent on being hired as head custodian at Concord. So we had some internal movement here. Head custodian at Concord took the Cookson job, left the head custodian position at Concord, second shift. Joe is, that's not his name. His name isn't second shift Joe. Joe is on second shift. He's going to Concord as the head custodian. So actually, I've done classified orientations recently. And for those people that are just looking at their email, it looks like we've had a lot of custodial openings, and we really have. We've had a lot of custodial movement. So it's a good thing. People moving, not moving into new roles. So those are the resignations, retirements, and discharge. The second page there, actually below that, non-renewals, pretty typical, it's our fall sports supplemental, so standard for us to non-renew those folks. Leaves of absences, we have five on the list this month, and I feel like almost daily, I'm meeting with somebody else that is going to be taking off her child-rearing leave. And as, as Dr. Moore likes to say, I believe that's good for business. I think that's the quote I'm quoting correctly. So these are our teachers that are going to be taking unpaid leaves of absence that we'll ask you to approve. And then lastly, and most importantly, these are employments. So if you look at the classified, a few to highlight, highlight there, again, I talked about Julie Campbell, putting her in this new position, be very good for her, very good for Rich Baker. And then anytime we can hire a bus driver, I always like to highlight that. So Hurstley, he goes by Meyer and Griffiths. He's, he's coming to us from a neighboring district that I shall not name. But we're, we're actually getting him because of pay, and it really was that simple. So made some adjustments there. It was the right move for us. And so now we're able to recruit from other places. So a pretty small list this month, but it's still been, been a busy and exciting time as we wrap up this, this calendar year.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Dillon? Any questions for Mr. Dillon? Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hamm?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Trussell?
Yes.
Mrs. Porcher's?
Yes. Next, we have the second hearing of the public for any item that's not on the agenda. Next, we guess we need a motion to adjourn and move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase or the sale of property. Oh.
We have a couple other guests that are trying to hide out back here beside you. Think it'd be great if they told us why they're here.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Sorry, kids.
We're here for our speech class with Ms. Boden. We're supposed to listen to a public speaking event and we have to write a paper on how well all of you are doing.
Can we review that?
Wow.
I'm Allison Russell, I'm a junior at the.
I'm Emily Williams, I'm a senior.
Thank you for coming.
Can't wait to read the results.
Yeah.
I know, I can't either. Speaking results are really important to me.
Yeah, so that's a highlight of your career. Yeah, yeah, so.
And those young ladies are strong leaders in our building too, in that way.
Well, thank you for coming and hopefully we didn't bore you to tears and we got lots of good material to write.
We've all gotten emails recently, if we were to look into the mock election concept for our students, I know we have pretty packed schedules, but.
You mean for presidents?
I was just kind of, huh?
You mean for, in presidential election?
There's a, I had it written down, don't have it in front of me, but one of the programs in the state, they offer a particular program you can sign up for and it's basically a mock election. Kind of gives students an opportunity to be exposed to that whole process.